Uh. I will call the meeting to order. Can we please start with the roll call, Matt?
Yes, President Abbas. Vice President Martin is excused. Alder Carter is running a little late. Alder Bennett.
Here.
Alder Harrington McKinney.
Here.
Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Lemmer.
Here.
And Alder Wiheli. She is here, so we have quorum.
Thank you very much. Aldo Martin is joining us a little late, so she might be able to. Uh, we will move.
Mister, Mister President, I'm on my phone and I'll be driving, so please excuse me if I have to turn my camera off.
Please, please feel free to turn your camera off and please drive safe. Thank you. We will move forward with approval of the minutes. Can we please have a motion? Motion.
Move to approve.
Second by Aldo Lemmer, it's moved and seconded. Any question on the minutes? I do not see any hand raised, so I will consider as unanimous approval. I will move forward to disclosures and recusal. This is an opportunity for the body to disclose or accuse. I do not see any hand raised for disclosure or recusal. We will move forward to the update item, agenda item number two legislative file number six nine five two eight. Uh, twenty twenty two Economic Development Division work plan overview, Saran. Oh, Matt.
Yeah.
Thank you, Matt.
Good evening, everyone. For those watching at home, I'm Matt Mikulajewski, the Economic Development Division Director. And I am joined this evening by Saran Oak, who's our Office of Business Resources Manager. And Matt Walker, the DPC Director, is here as well. A couple of months ago, I presented an overview of the twenty twenty two EDD work plan to the Economic Development Committee. And Alder Wihilehe, who serves on that committee, asked me to come to you this evening and share an update regarding what we're working on this year for the CCEC. And so with that, I will share my screen here. Um, can everyone see the memo? Um, great. So I'll just briefly provide an overview of this memo that's within the packet for this evening's agenda. And then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And what I've done is I've divided our work plan by funding source, because we do have a significant amount of funding as identified in this early batch of programs and projects that are funded through the ARPA program. And those include the Building Improvement Grant Program, which is a new program that is going to be open to businesses throughout the entire city. So within each of your aldermanic districts, to assist with making upgrades to the interior of commercial space. We know that it can often be costly for businesses that are moving into a new location to sort of fix up that space to meet their needs. And so this program will provide up to fifty thousand dollars in the form of a match as a grant to assist those businesses with those efforts. We also have ARPA funding being directed to the Public Market Foundation. We have three hundred thousand dollars for a neighborhood business district support program. Again, this is a program that will be made available to business districts throughout the city, so likely throughout all the aldermanic districts. And this will provide funding to neighborhood business district organizations to work on initiatives to help bring customers back to many of our neighborhood businesses throughout the community. We recognize that a lot of consumer patterns have shifted because of the pandemic, and we want to use this to help support whether it be events or marketing or other activities that draw people back to many of our great local neighborhood businesses. We have not really started working on this program yet. We're focusing our efforts on the Building Improvement Grant Program first. But once the Building Improvement Grant Program is underway, we'll turn our attention back to this Neighborhood Business District Support Program. We also have funding for the Downtown Bacon Storefront Art Program, of which we're working with a couple of leads at the moment to help some local artists with getting some of their work displayed within some of our bacon storefronts downtown. Also through ARPA, we have two million dollars allocated this year to the Small Business Equity and Recovery Program. And within that, we see several subprograms. We have our Commercial Ownership Assistance Program, which helps historically disadvantaged entrepreneurs purchase commercial space. Again, this is a program that's available citywide throughout all of our aldermanic districts. And we actually have one of these grants on today's agenda, hopefully for approval by the council. So this program is up and running, and if you're familiar with anyone interested in buying a commercial property, please direct them to Saran Oak and Mike Miller. We have continued support for our pop-up shop. We have our initial pop-up shop on State Street that's doing well, and we're looking at ways to expand that to other neighborhoods. We're currently considering several options on the south side to locate a second pop-up shop within the community. The city's going to continue its support of the Kiva Madison Program. This is an online platform that allows individuals to contribute small sums of money to entrepreneurs, to assist those entrepreneurs with making generally capital investments in their business. So for example, if you have a caterer that needs to purchase a new piece of kitchen equipment, this is a program that can help them achieve that goal. It's a loan program where individuals throughout the community can make small loans, and those loans are then repaid, and individuals can then loan to other businesses. Again, Kiva Madison is available to businesses throughout the entire city. So again, if you're working with the small business that has some type of a need, that they're having trouble funding, Kiva is a great source of support. We have our new business ready program. Again, this is one we haven't really started yet, but it's on the docket to be started this year. And this is a program very similar to the public market, market ready program that will pull together a cohort of entrepreneurs interested in starting a new business in the city. And our goal, similar to the market ready program, is to provide wraparound services and also grant funding for technical support to help those entrepreneurs move their idea to hopefully a successful business. We have our Great Facade Grant Program, which is in its, I believe, twenty-second year now, and we continue to have funding available for that. This year, we're going to continue the Carts and Parks Program, which provides a basic level of financial support to food carts to locate in some of our city parks, citywide. And then also, we're going to continue the Madlet Program on State Street this year, which you may recall had its first year last year and provides an opportunity for musicians to perform within the top of State Street. So those are all efforts that are being funded through federal ARPA dollars. We then have a series of projects and programs that are being funded through our capital budget with city levy dollars. These include the Co-op Enterprise Development Program. This is the technical assistance and grant funding that we have to assist new entrepreneurs interested in forming a co-op or help existing businesses transition to cooperative ownership. Again, available to businesses citywide. Our Healthy Retail Access Program provides funding to typically food retailers to make improvements within their stores that would allow them to provide better access to high-quality food. So for example, if a food store or a mini-market somewhere in the community needs to buy a new freezer or a new refrigerator, this is a program that is available to help with that purchase, and typically, these are grants. We have slated to do some work in the Capital East District about sort of planning the next steps for that neighborhood as it continues to evolve. We have, right now, we have our BLIGHT study for the new South Madison TID is underway. We've hired a firm that is completing that BLIGHT study. Our goal is to have that BLIGHT study finished by early summer, and we will then spend the rest of twenty twenty-two identifying a boundary and a project plan for this new South Madison TID. That TID will be formally created likely in early twenty twenty-three, and we need to wait because we need the Town of Madison properties to come into the city prior to creating that TID, because that TID will cover both what is now town property and also city property. But that work is definitely underway. And we have funding in our budget for a new State Street TID. And we are actively working on creating a project plan for that new TID right now. And that will likely, a draft of that will be circulated in the next month, and our goal is to have this TID set up this year in twenty twenty-two. The six hundred thousand that is in the capital budget can be used for everything from helping with the pop-up shop. It can help with some of the building improvement grants that I discussed earlier. It can help with some planning and marketing studies. And also, we can use some of this funding to make some upgrades and replace some furniture and fixtures downtown that are starting to get a little old. So we might use it for replacing benches that are perhaps starting to fall apart or fixing up some of the bus shelters and other public amenities that are located downtown. More certainly to discuss in the months ahead on exactly how we should use those funds, but those funds will be available in our budget and in the new TID to do some of that work. We also have a couple of initiatives within our Economic Development Division operating budget. We've retained a firm that's going to assist us with some business outreach to Town of Madison businesses. That's likely going to take place in May. And what we want to do here is really make sure that the businesses that are currently in the town, that'll be coming into the city, have everything that they need the day that we transition. We want to avoid a situation where a business doesn't have a particular license that they need or is out of compliance with some city regulations that might be different than the town regulations. So through that outreach effort, we're going to try to connect with every town business that's going to come into the city and make sure that they're in good shape for transitioning to the City of Madison. We have continued funding for Madison Bid programming, and this is a continuation of some of the programming that the bid's done over the past five years, providing opportunities for people to come downtown and hopefully frequent the businesses. And then we have continued funding for MADREP. MADREP is the Regional Economic Development Organization that we work very closely with on especially site selection searches and business expansion, larger business expansion projects in the city. We have several CDBG-funded initiatives, so we work closely with our partners in the Community Development Division on these. And that's continued funding for the Black and Latino Chambers, our revolving loan fund that the Mass and Development Corporation maintains, as well as the loan fund that WIBIC maintains. Both of those loan programs are available to businesses throughout the city. And so again, if you have a small business that you're working with that is in need of loan support, both MDC and WIBIC can be great sources of financing, and they have funded between the two of them dozens and dozens of businesses throughout the past twenty years throughout the community, actually longer in the case of Madison Development Corporation. And then we have several other initiatives that I just wanted to highlight that don't necessarily have specific dollar amounts in our budget, but are ones that we're devoting significant time to. Both on the OBR side and the real estate side of the Economic Development Division, we just have a number of projects that we work on that help facilitate businesses and developers. So these aren't items that necessarily appear within our budget, but we do devote a lot of time doing some of the work needed to help our business community succeed. On the real estate services side, I'll also highlight this year that they'll be completing all of the real estate work for the east-west Bus Rapid Transit Corridor. So we're going to have to purchase as a city significant property. In many cases, it's, you know, maybe six inches off the front of someone's property, as well as doing some easement work and encroachment agreement work in order to make that BRT project a reality. And that work is going to be, that real estate work is going to be occurring this year. So for those of you that, your district is along that east-west BRT corridor, you might get some outreach from constituents inquiring about some of that real estate-related work. We've been working closely with streets and county staff on the landfill expansion project, both the landfill self and also the Sustainable Business Park that's going to go along with it. We continue to work on the Truman Olsen Grocery Store Project on South Park Street, as well as our continued land banking efforts in South Madison. As you likely know, we recently closed a nineteen oh one South Park Street that adds to the portfolio that we are acquiring to help facilitate some quality redevelopment in the years ahead. We are actively working on the Lake Street Parking Structure Redevelopment RFP. We had a briefing at Finance last week, and we'll be negotiating now with Mortenson for likely several months. The Urban League Black Business Hub, I'm happy to report that the team completed the first of two closings to help make that project happen last week, and especially with great work from the City Attorney's Office. The City Attorney's Office has played a key role in that effort. We continue to sell property in our Southeast Business Park and the Center for Industry and Commerce. And actually, we have a resolution being introduced tonight for one of those property sales. We have continued work on the streetery program. And in fact, there's several resolutions and ordinance changes on your council agenda this evening for that program. We continue to manage our federal EPA funding for our Brownfield Grant Program. This is a program that really doesn't get much attention, but it actually plays a very useful role in a lot of redevelopment throughout the community. This is a program that will provide grant funding to a developer to assist that developer with completing phase one and phase two environmental assessments of property that they feel might be contaminated. And it's a pretty straightforward, easy funding to receive, and it's managed through our Office of Business Resources. We are continuing to do some redevelopment support for the Center for Black Excellence and Culture. As I mentioned before, working on BRT-related items and then hopefully upgrading our website, which is in great need of updating this year. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions that anyone has.
Any questions for Matt? And I can ask you one quick question about EPA grant, the federal grant. Do we know what are the active projects right now happening in Madison under that grant, or which projects are taking advantage?
This is in reference to the EPA Brownfield Grant. I, I do not know off the top of my head, but I can have Tom Otto forward you a list of who he's currently working with.
That will be very helpful. And my last follow-up question to EPA grant is, who will decide this is a contaminated, how, how, because phase one and phase two, like, there's development happening all over the city, so I'm curious how it kicking, because the phase one need to be done to know. It's real project.
That's a great question. When we applied, so how this works is we applied to the EPA as a city for a large pool of funds, which then we have available to sub-grants to developers interested in doing projects. And what the EPA had us do at the time that we applied for funding was to delineate on a map those areas of the city that are likely to have potential environmental contamination. And, you know, we took a pretty generous, you know, swath of, you know, starting with Park Street, going all the way up North Port Packers, and then the entire East Wash Corridor, basically all downtown. So we created a very large area of the city that we said could have environmental contamination. And so then we're allowed to use those funds for any project that's located anywhere within those areas of the city.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Aldo Carter.
Thank you. Matt, I just wanted to say that thank you for that detailed overview of our programs and projects that you're doing out of your office. I wanted to go back to the, if you can pull up your list one more time. I'm sorry, I didn't write it down. Thank you. So I wanted to go back to the, the Kiva and the Carts and the Park. How does, and maybe you went over in detail. The Kiva really depends on residents, regular people, donating money to the Kiva project. Am I correct on that?
That is correct. So.
Go ahead.
Okay. So what our funding is used for is the, it provides, it does two things. One is it provides funding to Kiva, which is an international organization, to be able to use their platform, their online platform. And then second, we have an agreement with WIBIC where the funding that we provide to Kiva helps support a full-time staff person that helps the entrepreneurs get on the platform and get successfully funded. We also have a portion of these funds that we do use to match some projects within the city using city dollars. But you are correct, that the majority of the actual funding comes in from individuals throughout the community. And we've been tremendously successful where, as soon as a Madison project is posted on the platform, it usually gets fully funded within a couple of days. And I don't remember the exact number, but I believe in the three years that this program has been in existence, we've leveraged about eight hundred thousand dollars of private support throughout the community. So it's had a very good sort of benefit for the cost to the City of Madison.
That is fantastic. And then the Carts and the Park, is this something that we're trying to, I don't want to say replicate, but in some cities, they have, you know, ten or twelve carts that are in an area. Is that something that we're looking at, or are we just looking at a couple carts in various parks?
I think we're looking more towards the latter.
Okay.
From the perspective that, one of the goals of the program is to really allow sort of food cart vending to occur all throughout the city, so kind of spread it around. And obviously, we have parks all throughout the city, so rather than having sort of a few stationary areas to kind of have it spread along. Now, the interesting thing, and I was just having a conversation with Megan Blakehorst, our street vending coordinator today on this, is that in the course of the pandemic, we saw a lot of food carts close, and in many cases, probably closed permanently. We are starting now to see a pickup of carts coming back and new entrepreneurs coming into, into being. And so it'll be interesting over the next couple of years to see if this Carts and Parks Program continues to expand, because it really provides a great, unique opportunity to sort of have additional food cart vendors throughout the community. So over time, it might evolve, and we might have some more permanent locations and then sort of more traveling locations on top of that.
What I thought was interesting in my research was some neighborhoods have Food Cart Thursdays, for example, that they're having a food cart in their park, and it's a way of gathering people for an evening dinner. So I thought that was a very interesting, very smart program. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Aldo McKinney, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Excellent presentation. And my question is, there's, there's a lot of information that was presented. Is there any way that you could design a, a handout piece or something that we can pass out within our, our business community that will kind of highlight and bullet some of what you talked about? But I always like to have a leave-behind piece. Is that something that is doable?
Yes, we have a, like, small business guide of programs that we have, which we're actually in the process of updating, because some of the new programs that are coming online. So we do hope to have that, you know, finished soon, and then we can certainly make that available. And then, as I mentioned, one of our goals is to redo our website, so it's a little more user-friendly and that this information will also be available on our, on the website. It currently is there for the most part, but it's perhaps not as user-friendly as it could be.
Okay, and then the, I like everything that I've heard. I also am always keeping in mind for, you know, those who might not have access to the website, I'm glad that you're making it more user-friendly, but, but as soon as that piece is completed and revised, you'll be making that available to Alders as well.
Yeah, what we can do, and we did this a few years back, and now that hopefully we're going to be back to more in-person meetings, what we can do is when that's finished, we can print, you know, print, you know, a couple hundred, and then what we can do is leave a stack of those at the council office for Alders to just take as your meeting with businesses or going to other neighborhood meetings.
Excellent, thank you. I'm complete.
I should also mention that we are also happy to come out and meet with neighborhood business districts to also talk about the programs as well. So if you ever have a neighborhood business association, whether it's formal or informal, you know, please let us know, and we're happy to come out and also talk to businesses in your district.
Thank you. Aldo Wiheli.
Thank, thank you, President Abbas. I don't have any question, but I just want to make a comment and thank Matt and his team for this wonderful presentation. I was inspired by the Economic Development Committee meeting, and you guys are doing a great job, and just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Matt, and I don't see any further hand raised, so appreciate all that you shared, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
With that, we will move to agenda item number three, legislative file number seven zero two nine seven. Community alternative response and agency services. We have two registrants. Agenda item number three, first is Joseph Keys, neither support nor oppose wish to speak from Regent Street. Joseph?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the time that you've given me tonight. I just have a question for the CCEC, and that is I was a little bewildered by the mayor's cares blog today. And I had, my question concerns not providing the service to mental health and people in mental health crisis, but how it's administered. The stats that were given, when I computed out, I'm an accounting type, I come out to about one point eight calls per day on average. And then averaging fifty-three minutes. And then with averaging 53 minutes per call, it's, I'm coming out that the the services provided to providing the services 20% of each day's work. I know that the that this is being expanded, but back on December 8th of 2021, there was a Zoom meeting and Assistant Chief Stedman said that an average call was about a hun- would be 180 minutes. My question is, uh, is anybody going back and looking at the business plan to this? And revising it or refining it? Um, it seems like it's it was fairly uh, off off target. And I'm just wondering how that's going to be handled. That's my comment for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next in line is Bonnie Dow from District 11. Some are slain, wish to speak, neither support nor oppose. Bonnie.
Good afternoon, President Abbas and members of the Common Council Executive Committee. I just want to start out by saying that I agree with the concept of cares and the heart behind it. And like the previous speaker mentioned, after reading the mayor's update this morning, I was kind of surprised, I guess, at the start that it's received. I never would have guessed that the team is ready to go citywide when according to my math, which I guess is probably right if an accountant approved it, that they're responding to just under two calls per day and an average of 53 minutes per call. I know that MPD takes a lot more mental health calls in the central district district alone than two per day. And if the cares team quickly discovered that they had the capacity to broaden their service area outside of that, it tells me that there is a very small number of calls that the cares team is able to take. Whether that's due to the vast majority of calls, having previous calls that are violent in nature or the impossibility of ruling out weapons or or what the what it is, I don't know. Um, I do know that $250,000 was taken from MPD's 2021 budget and another 83,000 from MPD's 2022 budget, leading me to wonder if it might make sense to tweak this response team just a little bit and maybe consider adding a police officer, maybe even one in plain clothes. And that might allow for a much broader response for this team. It might not be enough for a high level call, but I would think it might broaden the service population greatly. And I think all of us would like to see as many people as possible being responded to by the cares team and including a mental health professional and a medic and in my opinion, consider including a a police officer in plain clothes. Thanks for your time and I look forward to hearing more about the update.
Thank you very much, Bonnie. With that, Chief Stedman, chief. Aldo is here.
Hi there. Good evening, everyone. I'm Chase Stedman, the Assistant Chief of Medical Affairs with Madison Fire. And I've been overseeing the the planning and operations of the cares team. Um, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and I think I might have some answers for you to a couple of the questions. And and just for our folks out in the community of Washington right now, if you haven't heard a lot about the cares team, essentially, it's a it's a newer initiative in the city of Madison that partners up a community paramedic and a crisis worker, Journey Mental Health to respond to nonviolent behavioral health emergencies. And we started September 1st. And I just want to quickly, I guess, address some of the concerns about the call volume. I I think the the math is drive you divided by every day of the month. Um, the team is only responding five days a week, not including holidays. And we've also had to close the team down in a couple of days here and there because we lost one of our journey crisis workers. So we we do not respond all every day of the week. And it's so it's basically eight hours a day, Monday through Friday, not on holidays and a couple of days that the team had to be shut down because of loss of a worker. So um, that that might answer some of the questions, but I'll just get into a little bit more of the data right now and just with some brief slides. So you you can see that in Sep- from September to December of 21, when we were responding in the central district, we're only averaging, you know, some days we had five calls, some days we had one call. Um, and so we were only averaging a couple of calls a day. Um, and the the mention of the the Madison Police Department spending, it was 180 minutes on on calls compared to the 53 minutes the cares team. And the the Madison Police Department data was pulled over a two-year period. And on average, mental health calls lasted almost three hours for the police department as opposed to regular calls for service that were that were significantly shorter. Um, and so with with the cares team and their average time on scene, basically, is what it takes for the intervention on scene and then the the cares team hopefully transporting somebody to an appropriate uh, resource, right, an appropriate place for them to receive the care they need, provide a warm handoff. Um, and we hope that the 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 community, especially the patients that we're seeing um, are appreciating a a response that doesn't involve a police officer at this point. But again, it is for nonviolent calls, um, uh, you know, that involves some sort of behavioral health concern. So the the calls have been increasing. Um, in February, we saw almost 60 that month. Again, um, if you divide that by 30, um, that's two calls a day, but we're not responding every day. Um, sometimes it's only four days a week right now. Um, so calls per district, as you can see, most of the calls are happening in the central district because of that first three months that we were only responding in the central district. But since we've opened up citywide, you can see that our call volume is spreading out. And I'm sure we'll continue continue to see a more even spread throughout the city as time goes on. Uh, just a heat map of where the calls are located as well. Uh, calls per day during the week. Relatively even, a little bit more in the middle of the week. Calls per time of day. Um, and you know, it's data like this that shows us that we might want to start operating a little bit earlier in the day um, and maybe do more of a 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. Um, and so this is this is the stuff that's good for us to see, right? Because we only have a 40-hour work week for our pilot program right now. Um, we we can only have this eight-hour day until we expand the time of day, I'm sorry, expand the hours of the day. And then just some brief patient history, quite a few of our folks have been previously served by Journey Mental Health. Uh, 18% of have been previously served by the cares team, so we do see some repeat patients and the cares responses. And then, of course, we like to track things like folks that are experiencing homelessness, um, whether they have health insurance or not, how, um, you know, food insecurities and everything else. So this is just some of the brief data that we've gotten. The other important thing that happened in December was that we added a a position in public health for a program manager and we the the gentleman we hired is a PhD who has experience in public health and emergency services. And so he's the one that's really taking a lot of this data and they're going to be doing the evaluation piece for us and working not only in with public health partners, but with UW Population Health as well. Um, just further on, uh, gender data, race, ethnicity. And then finally, just some of the the outcomes of the calls. So you can see here, 32% have been treated and transported by cares. This other 32%, this other tall graph here, it says assist public. That basically is us going out um, on a check welfare or check person call that comes through the nine-on-one center that didn't end up in a transport. And then the the other categories are relatively small. As you can see, 2% of the cares responses have ended up in um, having to actually call law enforcement in um, because of a particular issue that that law enforcement was needed for. So, um, you know, again, I'm obviously happy happy to answer questions. This this report, the the slides that you just saw will be sent out to all of the Alders tomorrow morning by uh, Matt Scanlon in Public Health with narratives underneath all of them. So you'll get this in a PDF format tomorrow morning. But yes, happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Chief. Aldo McKinney.
Uh, thank you very much. And um, thank you for saying that the slides will be sent out. That's one of my questions. The other, it's a part of a question and it's a comment, uh, Chief Stedman. This is a pilot, is this correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I I I want to make sure that I lifted that up because the prior, uh, former chief Davis, when one of the last um, council members that he attended, he was very clear that this is a pilot and it's still in the data collection phase. And I I recognize that. And the council still made a decision to sweep money over um, to the program. And even when the uh, chief said that this is a pilot and they and you just didn't know what the numbers were going to drive because this is a pilot. Um, so I wanted to recognize the work that you've done. I'm absolutely clear that um, that long term, that this is absolutely a great program. Um, uh, but understanding that a pilot is just what a pilot is. It's a data gathering so that you can know where the resources are. That one slide that you had on the race slide, could you go back to that one?
Yeah. Having to. Pardon me, I've got to get my.
Okay.
And and I could, yes, one sec. Apologies. All right, we'll get it to go this time. Um, I I don't seem to have screen sharing ability anymore, but can I can I, unless I can be given back to me?
No, no worries, no worries. I can I can wait until, um, I can wait until you send out the uh, data and then connect with you. Thank you. I'm complete.
Chief Jack again, I think so you should have it now.
Yeah. Yeah, it says it failed to start the window selected as invalid. Um, I I I can answer a question about it, but unfortunately.
That's okay, no worries, no worries. I can always reach out to you after I receive the slides. Thank you.
You're welcome. Apologies for the technical difficulties.
Thank you, Aldo McKinney. Any further questions? Vice President Martin.
Thank you. I'll be quick. I I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Stedman um, and and to everybody who's been working on this project. Um, I'm really excited that we also, not only have we grown this so far, um, we um, have have someone in place to analyze the data that we're collecting so that we can make sure that we have um, the services that are needed where they're needed. Um, and uh, I just want to say thank you to everybody who worked on this. This has been just quite a I'm just really proud of everybody who's put in work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Martin.
Do not see any handways. So with that, thank you very much, Chief, for coming and giving us presentation. We appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Have a good evening.
You too, thanks. With that, next is agenda item number four, legislative file number seven zero zero two three. Presentation on election-related litigation investigation, legislation, attorney has.
Thank you, President Abbas. Um, I will try to share my screen here. I thought I had this down, but let me try again. Okay, can you let me know if you cannot see that?
We can see it, but it's very hot. The font is too little.
Let me start this slideshow. Is that better?
That's great. Thank you.
Um, so um, I was asked to just provide a brief review of the election litigation and investigation that we're uh, involved in. Um, you've probably been reading some of this in the news, so I'll try to be brief and and take questions. First of all, we have a couple of cases related to Attorney Gabelman's review of the 2020 election. And uh, there is one case in Dane County Circuit Court and one in Waukesha County Circuit Court. This, of course, is the investigation that's been authorized by Assembly Speaker Voss, uh, related to the the 2020 election. Uh, one of his favorite topics, I guess you would say, has been the election grants that were received by over 200 municipalities in the state. Uh, and he's focusing on the five largest cities and the grants we received. So the Dane County Circuit Court case, that does not directly involve Madison. Um, the Department of Justice has brought a lawsuit challenging subpoenas that the special counsel has issued to the Wisconsin Elections Commission. The circuit court initially ruled that uh, it would not stop the subpoenas. Um, but mainly because the special counsel was not actually trying to enforce them and set up depositions. And that judge indicated that the uh, Elections Commission could come back to court if there was an effort, if there was an effort to enforce the subpoenas. So that brings us to the Waukesha County Circuit Court case that we are directly involved in and where the special counsel has attempted um, to enforce the subpoenas. Although I would say there's not been any really direct appeal to us to make arrangements for a subpoena. Um, this was a subpoena issued to the mayor and the mayors of several other cities. So, um, in this case, uh, Attorney Gabelman is seeking a court order to require the mayors to uh, appear for depositions in Brookfield. And we have taken the position, along with other mayors, that those depositions need to be conducted in a public setting um, because they are actually subpoenas issued on behalf of an assembly, of the Assembly Elections Committee. Um, we had, um, there was a scheduling order put in place that required us to provide to submit our our legal brief in that matter on March 21st after Attorney Gabelman has submitted his brief. In the meantime, Attorney Gabelman brought in two other municipalities and the Elections Commission. Originally, the case only involved uh, Mayor Rhodes Conway and the mayor of Green Bay. Because there are additional parties brought in, we, uh, Green Bay and we argued to the court that those other parties should have an opportunity to submit briefs before a court decision was made. So the judge agreed and we actually have a scheduling conference for this Friday where the judge will um, schedule a new briefing uh, schedule and deadlines for us to submit our brief. Uh, so I think that I think takes care of the active litigation regarding um, the election investigation. And then, as you probably also have heard, there's a pretty high-profile case involving absentee ballot drop boxes in the state. There was a court order issued by Waukesha County Judge which essentially prohibited drop boxes from being used for absentee ballot return unless those drop boxes were staffed at the clerk's office or in in-person absentee ballot voting locations, um, which in our case includes the city's libraries. Um, that court order order also prohibits ballots from being delivered or mailed by anyone other than the voter who completed the ballot. So this reverses decades of practice in Wisconsin elections in which spouses or neighbors could mail a ballot for a voter or uh, return a ballot to the clerk's office by the voter. The um, concern raised by the plaintiff was a practice called ballot harvesting, which is really large-scale collection of ballots by organizations, um, political parties, unions, which is really large-scale collection of ballots by organizations, um, political parties, unions, um, or other or or other groups. In Wisconsin, uh, based on my experience in elections, we have never really had that issue. There's never been any large-scale collecting of ballots that would raise a suspicion about who was handling the ballot or marking the ballot. Um, that uh, uh, court, that case was taken up by the Supreme Court, um, which, uh, first of all, the Court of Appeals had enjoined the circuit court order for the February election. It was then taken up by the Wisconsin Supreme Court, who kept that injunction in place for the February election, but not the April election. So those are the rules that the clerk's office is operating under for the April election. And then we expect a decision um after the April election from the for from the Supreme Court, which will um be in effect for the fall elections. Um, this, of course, creates some difficulties with uh voters who have disabilities and are not able to maybe get out of their house to deliver their ballot or even put it in the mailbox. Um, and those situations are being uh handled on a case-by-case basis so that accommodations can be arranged um for those voters so that we still comply with the federal um election laws and the uh and the ADA. Um, finally, the uh, there is, we still have pending litigation regarding the election grant that the city received from the Center for Tech and Civic Life. This issue was resolved in federal court um back in twenty-twenty before the election. The same attorney who was involved in that case filed complaints with the Elections Commission um, uh alleging that that those grants violated election laws because it interfered with public funding of elections. Um, the Elections Commission, after a long period of time analyzing those uh complaints, uh dismissed the complaints or found that they had no um, that they presented no probable cause that election laws had been violated. Those um Elections Commission decisions have been appealed to circuit courts um in in the jurisdictions where those cities are. So of course, we're in Dane County. Um, and I had hear that the court had a scheduled uh a scheduling conference on March ninth. The plaintiff's brief is due on, uh, it was actually submitted today, and our brief is due on April twenty-fifth. Uh, and then we'll have a decision in that case uh after the briefs are filed. Um, just a little bit more about the Gableman investigation. City staff has collected and provided over sixteen thousand pages of documents um related to elections, the city's administration of the elections, the city's budget for elections, um, and and other topics. There's been no follow-up um after we provided those documents in response to subpoenas, um, no questions about those documents. There's been no active request to depose uh the mayor or other city officials other than the issuing of of the subpoenas. So I I would just say briefly, if you, if you have subpoenas issued in litigation, the attorneys get together and they try to make sure that they can arrange the te- the details of a deposition, including the time and place, but also the scope of the questions that will be asked. These subpoenas were worded very broadly involving anything having to do with the twenty-twenty election. So we expected the special counsel's office to um, to reach out, to provide us with a more specific uh scope of inquiry, which has not been done. Um, after several back and forth where the special counsel um indicated to us and publicly that the subpoenas were not going to be enforced. Um, they filed that court action, which we um covered uh previously in Waukesha County. Um, there was, I had indicated here, a final report expected by the end of February. Um, there have been two interim reports that Attorney Gableman has presented to the Assembly Elections Committee. Um, there were questions about whether his, he had a contract in place authorizing him to actually continue with the investigation. Um, there's been a contract supposedly executed between Speaker Voss and Attorney Gableman um extending the inquiry until the end of April. So um, we will have to see how all of that uh plays out in the, over the next month. Uh, finally, I've uh, I was um asked to, uh, by the mayor's office to testify on some uh legislative um proposals in the legislature recently um on election laws. Um, so I testified in front of the Senate Elections Committee and the Assembly Elections Committee in uh February. Um, and uh, there are numerous bills that um, I guess, in general, attempted to add new requirements for both voters and clerks. And our testimony was focused on trying to simplify and clarify the rules for for both voters and clerks and asking the legislature to take a a voter-centric approach to elections to um, to to make the voting process easier for voters. So um, I don't know if we attach that testimony legislative and certainly um provide it if anybody is interested. As a general rule, um, those bills uh i- i- in the past have been uh passed by this legislature and then uh vetoed by the governor. Um, so I think I'll stop there and see if there are uh any questions.
Aldo Hack.
Thank you. Uh, thanks, Mike, for all you do for the city. And I mean, obviously, this really benefits the entire state, so uh we're lucky to have you as a city attorney. Um, one quick question, do you foresee any changes in, let's say, the makeup of the W E C in the next six months or year that could change the direction of some of these items, one way or the other?
Right. Um, a good question. You know, I think the short answer is the legislature is not in session anymore uh for this term unless it come in back into a session for an extraordinary session or a special session. So we're not expecting any action on that front um anytime soon when the legislature comes back into session. Um, next year, that may be on the table, uh, it may depend, of course, on also who's uh elected uh as governor. Um, so uh, for those of you who don't know, the Elections Commission is made up of three Democratic appointees and three Republican appointees. They, of course, cannot pass election laws, but they can uh promulgate administrative rules and provide guidance. Um, and that three-three split has, in some cases, uh led to some s- some uh stalemates over the last couple of years.
Okay. Thanks for the information.
Aldo Carter.
Thanks, Attorney Haas, for your overview on this. Um, my concern is the drop boxes. Have they um, I mean, before, they were in numerous places. Have they um limit the where they can be? Have they voiced that?
Um, well, there is no limit in state statutes. Drop- drop boxes just are not mentioned in state statutes. Um, and so under this current court order, they have to be staffed wherever they exist. Um, but there, there isn't any limit in the court order about how many places they can be. Um, I will note, our drop boxes, our standalone drop boxes, of course, are are locked, so they're not uh, voters are not able to put absentee ballots into those drop boxes at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Attorney Haas.
Um, I I would, one last thing I would mention, if anybody's interested, is um, on Friday, I recorded a podcast with uh Rick Hazen of Election Law Blog. He's a nationally recognized expert on election law and campaign finance law. It was just posted today. Uh, if you go to Election Law Blog, it's about a half-hour podcast that deals with kind of Wisconsin election administration over the last decade or so and also the Gableman investigation. And we tried to squeeze all of that into a, into about a half hour. So you can go to that website or let me know, and I could send you the link.
Why not Attorney Haas, you send all of us the link?
Well, we'll do that.
Thank you. Thanks for your work. I appreciate that. Any further questions? I do not see any hand raised, so thank you very much, Attorney Haas. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment, second.
It's moved and seconded. We'll see you all at six-thirty. Bye.